I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll calls.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek. Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing that I'd like to comment on, under old business.
Under old business, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing under new business.
Under new business. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could you pull your microphone closer?
Pardon me?
Could you pull your microphone closer, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to pull the minutes of the utilities commission.
You'd like to pull them, or you'd like to talk about them?
Both.
Okay. Well, do the consent agenda with the exception of the municipal utilities minutes of November 10th, 2014. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Councilman Christensen, if you'd like to speak about the Warner Municipal Minutes of November 10th.
Yeah, I'm referring to the land purchase that they want to buy for the substation, second one, at Priam. I understand the land is owned by Jennie O. Turkey Store. And they want us to purchase all the acreage. All we need is 12 acres, the utilities. And they want $9,000 per acre. We just did a land deal with them so they could expand within the city limits of Wilmer. I understand that this has been in the works since somewhere around July of 2013. And I'm wondering why we didn't probably do a land swap with them. I mean, they want top dollar for the acreage. And I understand, pulling it up on the Internet, it isn't that great of farmland. And they want $352,000 for it. What does the rest of the council think? I mean, I think it's, I don't know what term to use, absurd, that this is, they would pay that kind of money for acreage we don't need. I don't like it.
I missed the amount of acreage that Jennie O. has drawn. Would you tell us again what the acreage is?
Well, it says it's 47.22 acres. And, I mean, we're talking about taxpayer money here. That's who we represent, the taxpayers, and it's their money. And they own the utilities. I find it rather strange that this is happening after we did the land deal with them for their Jennie O. Turkey Store out here. I mean, am I the only one that feels that way? Or, I feel like we're getting robbed.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I have a question for our city attorney. The land that, I met with Wes Hopp, Mr. Dacken and I, earlier this morning, for a few minutes we talked. My understanding is that the land, if we sell land by state statutes, we cannot sell it for less than what we purchased it for. Is that correct? Is there a statute requiring that?
Councilmember Ammon, I don't believe there is a statute requiring that. I think cities frequently sell land for less than its market value. Obviously, when that happens, though, there needs to be adequate findings that there's a public purpose to do so. But no, I don't believe there is a general prohibition against selling land for less than the city acquired it for.
Thank you. Also, I was looking at the land. Good, Mr. Mayor, Bruce just passed out some information on some land out here by the airport right away for the airport site. And that's pretty prime area, and that's $8,000, $8,100 an acre for that appraisal. And I'm just curious, I share some of the same concerns. I've had several telephone calls, people asking me about it, and we knew nothing about it going down. And I think I mentioned with Jim and I, both this morning talked with Mr. Hopp, just out of concern that we be informed of purchases like that, just to be in the know and keep the line of communication open. So in this case, it didn't. We weren't informed about it. Whether it would have made any difference, I really don't know. But I just think for the purposes of communication and dialogue, it would be beneficial for everybody to be informed of future tax indebtedness, whether it be the MUC or Rice Hospital, or in the case, the city here, that we'd be informed of those issues. And I think that should be a practice we should probably follow in the future, that in the negotiation process, I'm not sure who's negotiating, not to say that we are a better negotiator, anybody in the council, than staff. But I think it would be, since we are accountable to the taxpayers regarding Mr. Christensen's concerns, taxpayers' money, I think it would be appropriate for someone from the city council or the mayor and another individual, maybe, from the council to be involved in the process, or at least be informed of the process so that we're not surprised by it. I think it would just be a better dialogue. That's just my concerns on it. In this particular case, Mr. Hopp said that the land, they have not just the 12 acres, they have future expansion, or they could find future uses for that property if the substation should grow through the years. So it isn't necessarily the 12 acres right now that they need. It could be more in the future.
Kevin, is this just for information, or how does this work?
They can take action to stop this activity and send it back if they want. Right now, they're just discussing it.
Okay. Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was in today with Councilmember Ammon, and we did talk with Wes Hopp and a couple of other individuals from the MUC. Clearly, we need, as I've asked before, greater documentation on what we're doing, why we're doing it, what the initial dollars are that are involved, and what the sustainable dollars are. I think that they were pretty open and clear and transparent today with us. But it might be that we should probably have, and Mr. DeBleek is not here, and he was the primary from the MUC at that, and so has greater insight than I do. I don't believe I attended that meeting. But there is no doubt in my mind that the council as a whole, at least five council members, need to have greater understanding on this. And that's my point.
Thank you. Councilman Christ, or Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been on the utilities radar since 2013, purchase of this property that we're talking about, the 47 acres near Priam. I guess I would address that to Administrator Stevens or some of the staff to know if we have some history here, how long that's been on. Because, I mean, obviously, we were approached by Jennie O. for a deal which we participated in of substantial value and at significant cost to the city with respect to moving the road, Wilmer Avenue, to accommodate that land transfer and increase its useful purpose for Jennie O. And we need 12 acres, and they want us to pay for 47, was it, Councilman Christensen? Forty-seven point eight two. And I guess I'm wondering, when we were dealing with them on their request for assistance, it would just seem natural that we would have talked about maybe a trade here from the standpoint of negotiation. But this first, I've kind of heard about this, and I did have a couple of calls this morning at home from a couple of concerned citizens who knew more about this than I did. So I would share Councilman Christensen's concerns and Councilman Dacken's concerns.
When we were working with Jennie O. Turkey Store and the utility on the Jennie O. Turkey Store purchase of land and relocation of utilities, the utilities did not bring to our attention that they were looking at this type of property, certainly not to Mr. Peterson and I, or how far along they were with this property at that time.
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask our attorney, what would be appropriate motion be here to table this, to pull it from their minutes, to not approve it? I think we need more information, more background, and what occurred since July of 2013 when they started looking at this property to purchase.
Councilmember Christensen, the city's options at this point, what you've done so far is pulled it from the consent agenda, so you have not accepted the minutes of their meeting. What I think really matters is the overriding power of the council with respect to the utilities commission would be to flat-out veto the resolution that the utilities passed to authorize the sale, which requires a vote of five members of the council. Alternatively, if the council would like more time to consider this, you do have the option of extending the period for you to review their action for 30 days or until the next council meeting. And that does not specify a vote total needed to do that, so I think a majority vote would suffice.
Well, I would move to extend the period of time for us to look at this and, for up to 30 days, and bring it back to the council. Maybe have Mr. Hopp address this on this at the council meeting so we could have a little more history and find out what's going on, who did the appraisal. I just feel really, I can't make a decision on passing this tonight, so I'd make that motion to extend it for 30 days.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to extend the decision on the Wilmer Municipal Utilities for up to 30 days. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, it's a little bit of a slippery slope here, folks. We appoint people to these various commissions and bodies and entrust them to research and do all the things and do their due diligence. I think we need to support this. I know they had a lengthy discussion when you read the minutes, that they spent a lot of time talking about this, and they had some angst. So I think we need to support the commission's decision, and I would support staying with what they have recommended.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
One thought on that also is, we're trying to make intelligent decisions here based on limited information. That's hard to do. If it wasn't for the opportunity I had today to get that information, I was going to propose that what we should maybe do in a case like this, and it wouldn't be a bad idea. We're dealing with taxpayers' investments, and this is all going to affect everybody's rights, whether it be a commercial usage or residential uses. On acquisitions like this, I think we should have a public hearing. Let the people come here and talk. If there's a concern, let them come here and say something, rather than relying on just the seven of us trying to battle it out here. I think the public input is needed, and a public hearing would be the appropriate way to handle it. That way, we'd have, everybody would have an opportunity to speak on it. We could get opinions. We could have a presentation. It could be better understood, rather than just table it. I mean, tabling it is a good idea, but still, we have to deal with 30 days from now. And I'm a firm believer in letting the people understand and try to open up a dialogue with them that I think is very important. And that's our, I think that's our primary responsibility, is to inform those as to what's going on. I would feel much more comfortable with, rather than tabling it, to have a public hearing.
Mayor Yanis.
Councilwoman.
Just clarification. I know that the purchase of this land, not the specifics, but it's been in minutes prior to this, and I'm just wondering if Mr. Peterson has any comments about how this has been coming along? Because I know we've read about it before, either in their minutes or if there's anything with the planning commission or any.
It did not become apparent to staff until recently that the utilities was looking at this site. They may have inquired with Jennie O. Turkey Store in the past, but I don't know that they had any true discussions, and staff hasn't been part of it. I'd need to double-check the records to see if this has even gone to Megan and the planning commission, because the charter does require that land acquisitions go to the planning commission before they go to the council.
I just know I remember reading about it, the location being out by Priam, but I don't remember the specific minutes or that it was in.
Yeah, that was in some utilities minutes a month or so ago, when they're in the process of negotiating and getting the approval.
It was in, excuse me, it was in the capital improvement budget for the MUC. I think they had like 3.7 million dollars. I think that was including the land acquisition and the construction of the substation.
Councilman Fager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I recall is, they've been looking for another site for a few years, ever since that tornado went through south of town. They said if that substation went out, we'd be without power for many days or weeks. Now, this one just came up recently because they don't have live turkeys at that setup, and they're tearing down the barns and everything, and it's right off Highway 12. So by being close to a major highway like that, and you have power lines close by, they actually could be saving money by not having to run power lines a long distance like they had to do at the airport and at the waste treatment plant. And sure, $9,000 an acre is on the high end, but there are farmers out there that will buy it. I think we should go ahead with it.
Is there further discussion? We have a motion on the table to...
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead.
Question.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you take a vote on this, I should, I did not mention that the action to extend the matter needs to be by resolution. So I'd recommend that the motion be amended to a resolution before there's a vote on it.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen.
I would amend, move to amend the motion to a resolution. And I think it only prudent of the council, we the people that represent the taxpayers' dollars, take a look at this. I mean, the dollar amount, everybody's utilities rates has gone up several times in the last five years. And we're looking at more studies, revenue studies for wastewater and water, sewage and water, and electrical rates. And it just, again, be prudent of us to look at the history and see if, or renegotiate with them for 12 acres instead of 47.82. If we only need 12, I mean, you know, I'm in business, I buy property and have developed in the past, and you only buy what you need unless you know you're going to have a buyer for the rest of it down the road. But again, I think it prudent of us to take a look at this and maybe renegotiate it. So I would amend it to a resolution.
The motion has been amended to a resolution.
Second, your...
Mr. Mayor. Second. Go ahead, Audrey.
Just a point of clarification. I guess I'd like to see that it's gone through the proper steps with the, through planning commission, et cetera. It's probably okay for us to hear what the utilities have done. I'm assuming they've done their homework. But I think if we're uncomfortable with it, to have them come in and speak and clarify so that everyone is on the same page is probably okay.
Would you table this, then?
I'm just making a comment about Bruce's, Mr. Peterson's not sure if it's gone through the proper channels. I think we probably need to check that out. And to listen to the utilities, give them a chance before we pass judgment on what they're doing. I think, give them an opportunity to speak for what they need and why they went down this road. So I'm okay with giving it another two weeks for the next meeting.
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can speak to that a little bit. I did, obviously, the utilities approved this at their meeting last Monday. It was represented that they had been to the planning commission and received planning commission approval...
That's what I thought.
...to the commission. That's as much as I understand about it, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Scott is correct. I did check the planning commission minutes earlier today. At their meeting on October 8th, they did recommend approval of the transaction. Wes Hopp was at that meeting and did make a presentation. I did listen to it online. And Mr. Peterson was there also.
What do we need to do?
At this point, you have a resolution to extend the time to review Resolution 44 for 30 days.
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead.
Since Councilmember Johnson had listened to that, do you have any further information as to what they shared at the planning commission at that time?
Not really. It was quite brief.
Okay.
They didn't even make any indication of who the owner of the property was. No discussion naming the owner, so I don't know if that was known or what. I have no idea.
We have amendments on the table. Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we're not against another substation. I think we all agree, we need one. If one goes down, at least we have another area for electricity to come into Wilmer. But we do need to look at why we can't renegotiate and just use the 12 acres. I mean, so I'm not against it, and I think any of us are. Let's take a little time here and find out what we're doing, why we're doing it, is it sustainable, and do we really need to spend this kind of money on it? I suggest we vote.
Thank you. That being said, we will do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson.
No.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly. Six ayes, one nay. Motion carries. I'd like to remind you, Mr. Mayor, you should approve the remainder of the minutes.
I would move to approve the remainder of the municipal utilities commission minutes of November 10th, 2014.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the remainder of the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Minutes of November 10th, 2014. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Scheduled hearings, Kevin, do you want to talk to us about that?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, our office is in receipt of two currency exchange licenses from the Department of Commerce. We have one for Quick Funds Inc. and Bennett Ventures Inc. It is part of the process to have a public hearing to take testimony from any concerned citizens who may have some issues with either one of these operations. It is staff's recommendation to have separate hearings, take testimony, and if hearing no objections, to approve the license for each one of them as listed here.
I will now open the hearing for consideration of the currency exchange license of Quick Funds Incorporated. All those, do I hear any, to the public? If there's any questions or comments from the public, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consideration of the currency exchange licenses of Quick Funds Incorporated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I will open the hearing to the consideration of the currency exchange license of Bennett Ventures Incorporated. Is there any comments from the audience? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open it to the council.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consideration of the currency exchange license of Bennett Ventures Incorporated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That carries. We will now move into the open forum.
Mr. Bob Score is signed up, sir.
Bob Score.
Name and address, Bob?
Bob Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street. I am here as a concerned citizen, taxpayer of Wilmer. As I drove by the airport for years, especially after fairly good rain, I would always see water encroaching the Nav-8 building at the airport and wonder why someone just didn't take a shovel out there and dig a little ditch to the main ditch there. Last time I went to Appleton, I saw drainage work that was done around the Nav-8 building for $11,883. For the minimal groundwork done out there, I can't believe that our city maintenance department couldn't have done the same job. Just what can our maintenance department do? It seems like we farm out most of the issues in Wilmer to some other contractors who are getting rich by this process. Next is the land that the MUC wants to buy from Jots. Ron, you took my fame out of this one, but anyway, what's up with that? We did another, do we need another substation, and who is it for? I was told it was for Hormel, so they can make sure they have power all the time, 24/7. I was told by a very good source on this. So, and I was told last fall, 2014, about this 12-acre piece. So we give them a great deal on the land they received, only to pay full bore on this land transaction if it goes through. Shame on someone there. And for someone to say, when you guys say that people do their homework, I heard that farmers were paying $9,000 an acre, is just ridiculous, to purchase the extra 35.82 acres more than what we need, is totally wrong. People need to be held accountable for spending tax dollars money. It's kind of a joke. Also, a Jots employee on the commission that refrained from voting, is there Jots employees or ex-employee on every board, commission, council, et cetera, in this town? What's wrong with this picture? Then can someone tell me what we're doing to the land across Highway 5 and Industrial Park? We have issues in Wilmer that need attention, and we're spending all this money out there. When was the last property sold to a big business from out of town? Just why are we spending a lot of money out there? Then, when you want taxpayers to vote on another lost tax plan, local option sales tax, to help pay for your spending, again, enough is enough. About two to three years ago, Trot Avenue was totally redone with a thick layer of asphalt and infrastructure, only lately to be cut up for the installation of a natural gas pipeline. For who? Now we have another street from 13th Street Southwest to 16th Street Southwest patched up with a bumpy patch job. No membrane replaced in the cut area, and the taxpayers who paid for a nice new road have a patched road to pay for. No one saw this coming before? No matter what, it is another joke, just like Candy O. Avenue on the southwest side of town. With a $33 million budget online for 2015, just where is all this money supposed to come from? Divide that $33 million between the real taxpayers of Wilmer, and it doesn't look good. Can somebody tell me who's responsible for the red letters on the form sign-up sheet that says "three-minute limit"? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other people that were... Are there any other people that were scheduled to speak?
No, sir.
Was there anybody else that cared to speak? Hearing none, we'll move into the Public Works Safety Committee report of November 13th, 2014. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did call the meeting to order at 4:45. The next item was public comments and nobody cared to comment. I take that back. Newspaper, Mr. David Little was there and he did make a comment since I asked. He said that the public works staff, he wanted to thank them for the great job they did cleaning the streets after this major snowstorm on Monday. Councilmember Nelson also stated the public work staff was also in the West Central Tribune hats-off column after that storm for doing an outstanding job treating. Item number three was the police and fire update. We received an update from our police chief, Mr. Felte. He said that jail senses on that day was 119 and the calls for service for the previous two weeks was 728. Those, majority of those calls were for traffic stops and public assists. The fire had, fire update handout was provided and that was attached in your council minutes. Item number four, we were to accept project and authorize final payment for project number 1304. This is a resolution. Our public works director brought forth for approval, change order number one, for final quantities in the amount of $8,781.26. And to authorize final payment to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $23,102.87 for project number 1304, Robbins Island Pathway. The project is within budget and a 20% match. After some discussion, a motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the change order and authorize the final payment to Dunick Incorporated for project number 1304.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the, to approve the amount of $23,102.87 for project number 3, 1304, Robbins Island Pathway. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Our next item, item number five, was to accept the project unauthorized final payment for project number 1301-A. And this is pending discussion by the full council. Once again, our public works director brought forth for approval, change order number two for final quantities in the amount of $56,473.18 to amend the budget and authorize final payment to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $143,493.65 for project number 1301-A, which was the Candy Y Avenue reconstruction. Adding payment of the change order brings the final project amount to $1,388,522.98, which is covered by the CIP. The committee questioned if the adjustments were due to design error from bolig engineering or from the instill, from the installation by the contractor who holds, and who holds responsibility to pay for the change order. It was the committee's consensus that we continue this discussion at the council meeting tonight, pending further information that we ask to be provided by our public works director, Sean Christensen. And Sean, I would call upon you and ask if you have any further information for us.
Thank you, members of council, mayor, Councilmember Christensen. Yes, I do. In fact, I got to apologize, the information I gave to you at the public works meeting was slightly incorrect in the description of the change order. The numbers were right and it was change order number two. The project was correct, although when I described it as additional asphalt to create, recreate the crown, that was incorrect. I was thinking of different projects and I apologize for that. What this particular change order is, is a over and under run, a summary, if you will, that is, that occurs after every project, when they do the final tallies on each line item on, on the bid, bid project. And so, that being said, this change order number two is actually for the, this same amount of money, but is for the summary to zero out the line items on the, on the project.
A summary to zero out the line items? The, I guess I'm not following you.
Okay, so if you, if you take the change order itself, and I don't know if it's in the, the agenda or not, but what happens is each line item then is, is estimated by the contractor. And so, the contractor says, I'm going to use so many yards of mix and so many tons of material for, for this particular project. At the end of the project, when he does all his math and his loads and his calculations, they put the actual numbers down and then they do it, they see, basically, they get to a positive or a negative at the end of that line item based on what they estimated at the beginning of the project.
Okay, so, the, the, it wasn't due to an engineering glitch at all?
That's correct.
Okay.
Nor, nor the contractor.
Okay, with that, I will move the resolution to approve a change order number two for final payment.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the change order number two for final quantities in the amount of $56,473.18 and amend the budget to authorize final payment to Dunick in the amount of $143,493.65 for project number 1301A. Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Item number six had to do with accepting a project and authorizing final payment for project number 1110. And again, this is a resolution. Once again, our public works director brought to us for approval, final payment to Geiselinger and Sons Incorporated in the amount of $185,650.97 for this project 1110, which is the Western Interceptor. The final payment is within the project budget. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to authorize final payment to Geiselinger and Sons Incorporated for project number 110.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to authorize final payment, project 1110, in the amount of $185,650.97 to Geiselinger and Sons. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
From there, we went into old business. I brought up the, or I questioned whether, if there was any report detailing what the cause of the genuine situation was last month, where we had to bring in added personnel to the hospital, ambulances from around the county, fire department, sheriff's department, police department. At that particular time, the, our chief was not at the meeting and he, he sent us a message that, or told me that there was no cause that they could find and there, there is no final report. And I'm wondering if one has been made to our administrator or anybody else? I think we owe the public an explanation of what happened that night because the, evidently we expended taxpayer dollars to assist in whatever did happen.
I think the report is much the same as what the fire chief gave about two weeks ago, right after the event to the city council that occurred. I mean, the fire department and ambulance were called out there due to kind of reports of illness at the plant. They did monitoring of the plant in terms of air quality, chemical exposure and such, and found nothing. There were 24 individuals, I believe, who were transported to the emergency room. All, all but one of them was evaluated and released. The employee who was kept overnight was released the next day and the majority of the employees returned to work, to work the next day. So, it was a Saturday shift and they, that was scheduled. So, they were all back, I guess, by Monday, October 20th. And then regarding the ambulance and emergency room bills, it's my understanding that Jenny O'Turkey stores is in the process of paying those bills.
That's the final report then? I mean, we will, we won't get anything as far as a cause? I mean?
There, there was no determinable cause.
Okay, because I, I've had phone calls asking, you know, what's, what's going on? Because at the time, you know, this Ebola thing is going on and a lot of citizens are concerned about something out there spread or, so we will, that's the final report? We won't be receiving anything else from OSHA or whoever did the investigating out there?
No, I do not believe we will. I will verify that with the chief. He is out this week. He'll be back next week and I'll verify that, but I believe that's the final incident report.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Another question was, or a phone, I got a phone call and I brought it up to the committee about the, wondering why the police department does not bid police vehicle accessories and such as lights and sirens and have it done locally. It was discussed the possibility that already had been included in the state contract and maybe I can ask our chief, Felte, if that's the case. There, there are local detailers that would do that and this one called and asked why, you know, why we should go out of town for it.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Christensen, Mr. Mayor and council. It's a good question. That is correct, that a majority of the accessories for the police vehicles that we order are through the state bid and are actually installed by the manufacturer before they come to the department. And the, a lot of the accessories that we do have for the cars, we recycle from, when a car goes out of service, we'll remove that equipment and reinstall it in another car so we can actually use that equipment for several rotations before it's replaced.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, our public works director, Sean Christensen, asked the committee their opinions of the new LED lights along Wilmer Avenue. The committee found it to be very bright and the light not spreading out as much. The preliminary engineering report will be presented at the finance meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, November 18th. An update was given on the progress of the auditorium. The subcontractor providing air handling system decided not to supply the units to the city, which will result in the auditorium possibly not opening until the end of the first quarter of 2015, which would be March, end of March. There was questions asked if there is any obligation to fulfill the bid by the company as the project has already been started and if a message can be carried to the community explaining the delay. And I don't know if anybody has any explanation other than one I give. Administrator, is there?
I mean, I think that's the, the, what the public works director gave. You, Mr. Christensen, is the, is the most up to date. There were some equipment that was specified in that. They were initially approved. The supplier didn't, decided not to supply those and so there's, in the process of ordering the other, to ordering another air handling unit and it's really dependent upon the arrival of that air handling unit before we can go forward with getting that range up and open. And so, it may delay the project. And we will look into whether we can assess any damages to that, but as, but we can't really do that until the project is complete.
So, it's kind of out of our hands, basically?
I don't think there's anything more that the city can do on this part. I mean, it is, it's, you know, we're not satisfied with it, we're not happy with it, but the equipment, the contractor attempted to order the equipment, the supplier isn't supplying it, they're having to go a different way.
Okay, thank you. That was the end of our meeting and if there's no questions or comments, I would move to file these minutes.
Mayor Yanis?
Second.
I think Mr. Christensen missed the first item under new business, the first paragraph.
I skipped one?
Yes.
Yeah. By George, I did. This is under new business also. Committee discussed the proposed Lakeland Drive extension in, in the Waterview Business Park, brought forth to the Public Works Safety Committee on April 29th. The public works director gave the history of Dunick Incorporated presenting their preliminary design at the April meeting and stated Dunick did give notice that they would like the project to be included in the improvement projects for next year, 2015. Staff is recommending street alignment changes from the preliminary plans. Residents of the area will have ample opportunity to voice any concerns through the Public Works Public Safety Committee meetings as well as the improvement hearing next year. That being the last item, then, I would continue to move the minutes be filed.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report of November 13th, 2014. Is there any discussion? Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Nelson for bringing that street alignment up because there are folks that live over in that area, as you know, that are concerned about it and would like to be a part of that public hearing when that does take place, so it's, thank you for doing that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those that are opposed to it say aye, same sign. Hearing none, that motion carries. Authorization of the city's acquisition of interest in real property for airport purposes. Mr. Bruce Peterson?
Mayor Yanis, council. The proposal tonight is to authorize staff to pursue the acquisition of property that contains several easements. We're actually trying to re-acquire some easements. These were easements that were granted by the city when we acquired property for the original airport. The permanent easement was granted through the mediated settlement and we were later told that we could not have a permanent easement on property that was partially funded or under the terms of the grant with the FAA. We have attempted to negotiate with the property owner on numerous occasions. We have not been successful. About a year ago, the council authorized staff to pursue these discussions and at the time, we had hoped to avoid the use of condemnation or eminent domain. We don't believe that's possible at all and the recommendation from staff tonight is to authorize that the council, or to recommend that the council approve the resolution that would authorize the city to enter into the eminent domain process to acquire the easements as required. As it stands, we stand to lose $150,000 per year in funding from the FAA unless we can eliminate these easements and, you know, obviously, it's in the best interest of the city to do so. So, staff would make the recommendation to pursue eminent domain.
I have to ask you, Bruce, is, is this fair? Is it fair to the person involved in the agricultural land located in section 19?
In our analysis of this matter, it's absolutely fair. They currently farm property in such a way that the easements are not even required, so they're not being denied any access to property. We've offered to work with them to provide alternative access to properties, but for a variety of reasons, they've declined and it's coming down to a financial matter. They want to be compensated for losing those easements and that's the direction this is going to have to go.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I wonder if we could get the screen down and have the tech person put that up on the screen so we could have a better idea graphically of what?
I'm sorry, we don't, I'm sorry, we don't have a graphic for those. They, they are, I believe, shown in the appraisals on, that are in front of you and it's the latter part of those.
We don't have a graphic we could put up on the screen?
We do not have one, I'm sorry.
That's amazing.
So, what, where do we go from here?
Well, it would be nice if the public could have a, a better understanding of what we're doing out there, okay? And, you know, we've had the map up numbers of times and now, all of a sudden, we can't get a simple map of the city and the airport property and Highway 40 and we can't get that up there? Find that really hard to believe.
On, there are two appraisals in front of you. On, on number 24A, it is shown on page 35 and I believe it's shown on page 36 for parcel 10A.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
And again, these are two easements that were granted as part of a mediated settlement when these properties were acquired as part of the airport acquisition. We are not trying to, we have tried to negotiate alternative access with the property owner. We've not been successful and the FAA has been, made it very clear that if the permanent easements remain, the city will remain out of compliance with the FAA and forego funding for the FAA, from the FAA for the airport.
I, I have a question on that, that FAA withholding payments. Is that an annual thing, withholding $150,000?
Correct.
I believe we've been maxed out with our, we've been able to carry four years or $600,000, which is basically in the bank for the city. I think we've missed two years of payments at the end of 2014.
And we cannot access the $600,000 at this point.
Until we're in compliance.
Until we're in compliance. So $600,000 is currently being held by the FAA. We no longer can accrue or bank additional funding. We cannot loan that to another airport either and get that back. So that's the, that's the financial kind of dilemma we have with the FAA. And we've tried to pursue all other options such as licensure agreements, a, and other accesses that the FAA has suggested and the property owner has rejected all of those.
Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution authorizing acquisition of the property.
I'll second it.
You second it?
Mm-hmm.
The motion in front of us, is that a motion or a resolution?
It's a resolution.
Resolution would be to...
Authorize acquisition.
Authorize acquisition of the property. There is discussion, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess a lot of this occurred before I was on the council, but my recollection and what I've read and then what I've been told by others, we condemned property out there, obtained fee title, and this was property that was needed for the safety zone at the end of the runway, I believe, at least what the minutes for tonight's meeting indicate somewhat, you know, some of that information. And then after we'd done that, we granted some kind of a easement or right of way across that property to one or more of the property owners. And now the FAA is telling us that that was a no-no. Did we know that before we engaged in that easement agreement or...
I can't speak to that either. I can't speak to that, Councilmember Johnson. I was not here at the time that that was, my understanding is that this was part of a mediated settlement. And it was granted as part of a mediated settlement. I'm looking to Mr. Peterson for confirmation. He may be more familiar with this, but...
That is absolutely true. The, in our opinion, at the time of negotiating the settlement, the value of those easements was factored into the value that the city agreed to for the property, which makes it frustrating to have to go back and reacquire those easements. Equally frustrating is the fact that the FAA did not get involved at that time and indicate directly to the city that there was any issue with granting these easements. So we're basically playing cleanup at this point and had we had some advice from the FAA 10 years ago, we probably could have forestalled some of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we attempted to contact Candace Crowell down at the FAA and get any specifics from her because she had lots of documentation?
Yes, we have worked with her and we have worked with, you know, we've had multiple meetings and we've had multiple conversations with the FAA. We've had FAA staff out to the city. We have pursued all of the alternatives that they have given us. We have tried to come up with other alternatives and suggested those to the FAA, but the permanent easement is not something that they will allow to remain in place and it's not something that the property owner at this point is willing to forego. I mean, again, we've had multiple discussions on this. And so this is where we kind of find ourselves. And the choices are, we could continue to negotiate with the property owner, which has not been successful over the course of the last year. We can continue to forego annual airport funds. Or we can, you know, pursue this, this, this action and perhaps that will lead the property owner to be more willing to negotiate.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So they, we can't access $600,000 in funds. There's another $150,000 yet to be paid that's being withheld.
Correct.
Does anybody have a recollection of what we, what it cost us to condemn this land the first time around? And what the approximate estimate would be for those, that legal action the second time?
I do not recall the original acquisition price. We can certainly research that and find that out.
I'm not only interested in what we paid as a result of the actions, but what it cost us to pursue those actions out of pocket. As I recall, you know, I wasn't on this body at that time, but there was substantial litigation and it went on and on and on. And I'm told that the city knew that they couldn't grant that easement when they granted it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, obviously, I've been involved trying to get this case ready to be filed for condemnation to acquire the easements. I've gone back and I've looked through the documentation resulting from the condemnation the first time around. I honestly don't remember the total purchase price for the fee title to these two properties. What I do know is that in looking through the documentation, obviously, the first phase of the condemnation, the city took fee title to these two properties among many others. And moving on to the phase of the condemnation where the amount of just compensation that would be owing to the property owners from the city was to be determined, the city entered into a settlement agreement with these two property owners, which involved payment of the amount the commissioners had awarded. Again, I apologize, I don't remember that figure, but in addition to that payment, the city agreed to grant these easements. Obviously, the fact that we're, you know, before you with this resolution indicates that was a mistake and whether that's because the FAA wasn't involved, I don't, I mean, I don't have a sense from that just looking at the documents. What we know is obviously the FAA has communicated to the city that they view the city to be in violation of the terms of the grant pursuant to which the city acquired much of this land. Also, in answer to your question, my understanding is that it's likely that many of the costs the city incurred in going through condemnation the first time would have been paid for by federal funds as well as state funds in a grant. There would have been some local contribution to that as well, but I don't have those precise figures.
And my further understanding is we also don't have a full release of the old airport land yet.
That is correct and that cannot, and that's also tied to this.
I mean, I guess I can see where the problem is. We don't get that money if we don't proceed, but I'm just a little bit disturbed as, you know, how this, how long this has dragged on and how convoluted it has been. And frankly, you know, I think this body's been kept in the dark on some of this stuff. It's a little disappointing.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification. I remember when we voted on this before to ask you to work on this. I don't remember the timeframe of it, but certainly, this has been going on for a long time. And obviously, there's a mistake and it feels like we're at the end of the road. Either we make the decision that, and accept it and move forward and, you know, it's unfortunate it happened, but I don't know, sitting around here and trying to find someone to blame, how that's going to help anything. Obviously, we should, we, there was something that was, needs to be resolved and I think we need to move forward and resolve it and, and go ahead with it and be done with it. I, I don't see trying to find who or when or why or how long. It's been, been worked on, I think, for a long time. So I'd encourage us to get it done.
Go ahead, Councilman Daca.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No one's blaming anybody. What I've been asking for, for a long time is, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? Again, the state auditor says we're supposed to keep minutes so we can go back to those minutes and make reference to them so that we know what we're doing and why we're doing it. It's a really simple process. It's just that we seem to not think we have to do that. And maybe if we did a better job of documenting what we're doing and why we're doing it, starting at the committee level, we would be able to have an explanation for the public.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
I believe we could go back to those minutes when we asked, when we were asked, when the council voted, because I remember the vote. And I do think those minutes are there. But I do think there is a tone here that we want someone to blame. And I don't know who we're going to blame. I think we've just got to face it and vote, be done. The minutes were there when we authorized the staff to go ahead and negotiate this.
Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, is there any other permanent easements that we have that will cause us further harm in the future with this land?
To the best of my knowledge, these are the only compliance issues that exist at the new airport.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
A quick question. As far as the usage of the land or the tillable land that's going to be, is that going to be leased back to the same owner? Has that, is that part of this contract? We just received this just five minutes before the meeting and I'm just, I haven't had time to review everything, but is that in there or is there an agreement with it?
If you look at the settlement agreement, it deals with the owner's ability to access the property for farm purposes and it gives them what I would put in quotes, "special treatment" in having access to and using the property. And that's part of our frustration because they have the ability to farm that property and not have to be part of the competitive bidding process. That again, was a finding in the mediated settlement. They don't need these easements. They've already got access across the property.
Okay.
And we've also, Councilman Raulman, we also have met with property owners and, you know, some of the suggestions that, that were given to us by the FAA was to do a licensure agreement, which would have really provided the property owner with the same type of access. It just wouldn't be a permanent easement and it would have been a five-year license renewable, I think, or a 10-year license renewable. Those were not something the property owner was willing to consider, but they would have... So it's not, it's not been our intent to deprive the property owner of access to the property, but the matter remains that we cannot have a permanent easement in place and be in compliance with the FAA. And the property owner has, has not been willing to accept anything less than the permanent easement.
I just want to point out, there's 50, 60 pages here plus another 55, five minutes before the meeting. And, and I understand that, I'm not blaming anybody. It'd just be nice, we have to waste our time talking about these trivial matters that obviously, we're going to go ahead of the project. I don't see why we can't or why we wouldn't. And I'm not trying to fault anybody, but I am questioning a couple of things on here that I wanted to, to bring up on the value of the land and what's going to happen with land prices, if I can find the right page here. Page 16 on the first report says, "Soil bearing conditions are regarded to be stable based on my inspection of the site as well as surrounding developments since no soil tests were available for my review. Good soils are regarded to be a condition of this appraisal." So I know that there's good, better and best in farmland. I'm not an appraiser rep. You can probably jump in on that, but maybe that's not your forte either, because it's kind of a specialty field when you get into farmland. And there is another item on here as far as what's going to happen with farmland values in the next five years based on data that this, this person received. And it shows that there is a strong chance that farm values will be going down, may be going down. And that, that's speculative. To what degree, anywhere from 5% to 10%, which I want to bring that to the council's attention on the value of the land that we're, we were talking about with the MUC. So I question the quality of the land and I don't know if that's, that's part of this. But in this particular case, Bruce, you've done your work. It's here before us. I trust your judgment on it and staff's judgment on it. And although it was not handled maybe in the most appropriate way, we're going to get the job done and let's move on.
I'd just like to remind the council that when we built a new airport in the year 2000, or when it opened in 2006, we were the only community in over 30 years to build a new airport in the state of Minnesota. So there was a lot of confusion at the local level, the state level and the federal level on exactly how to handle a brand-new standalone airport. No one in any of those offices had any experience dealing with it. So confusion might not be the best word, but it was a learning experience for all parties. And sometimes those lessons came at a cost.
Thanks, Bruce.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what I can gather, this, this has been before us more than twice. From what I understand, we got notice in 2007, it was around September, that we couldn't grant a permanent easement after it had been done. And I know we voted on it as, Councilperson Nelson mentioned earlier, to have staff renegotiate, try to negotiate with them. So evidently, you've talked to them how many times? I mean, three, four, five, 10 times? I mean, I don't know.
Yes, we have been, you know, there was some time where the property owner was not in the state and such, but Mr. Peterson and I have met with him at least a half dozen times and, and offered various solutions or sought what he would think of, what the property owner would consider to be reasonable solutions. We have gone back and forth with the FAA on those, on what the property owner suggested, alternatives to what the FAA suggested us. We looked at a 99-year lease, all kinds of different options to determine something that was acceptable to the FAA and to the property owner. And we just have not, have, have just not been successful and have not even really gotten the property owner to be able to give us even maybe a purchase cost for the easements, just an unwillingness. So, and understand, you know, and I, and we certainly understand that the meetings have been cordial. We understand where the property owner is coming from. They've been cordial meetings and appreciate all the discussion with the property owner, but we just can't seem to get to a resolution. That is satisfactory to the FAA as well as the property owner.
It's easy for government to use eminent domain as a last resort, I would say, but it, it does have an effect on this particular owner and his access to that property. I need to understand, you mentioned earlier that, or maybe Bruce did, that this property, the acreage we're talking about, or 266.3122, is accessible to them to farm from?
It's accessible off a township road to the west. They claim that they cannot access it from that road because it's not built heavily enough. One of the city's offers was to work with them to reconstruct or to construct a new access to the field and to create a 10-ton route down to that, which would have only have had to have been 100 or so feet off Highway 40. It's also accessible across the property that is, that they are currently farming under a lease agreement with the city. And that's the lease agreement that I said provides them for special access to that property and that property being connected to the subject property really invalidates the need for the easement. Yet, they are two different property owners on paper. So in, in theory, even though it's farmed by one person, the back property owner claims the need for the easement. I don't even want to get into that discussion, but we've, we've offered alternatives, as Charlene said, and we have asked him to come up with alternatives. We've asked the property owners to come up with a number, a value, what they think the easement's worth. And, you know, it's basically worth the total value of the farm, according to them. So the only way this is going to get resolved is to put it in front of a neutral group and let them iron it out.
So the, the road that you say you can't access it to or from, isn't a heavy enough road? Is it gravel, is it tar or what?
It's, it's a gravel road. It's a short section, a township road. It wouldn't take much to change the access. There's some grade issues that would have to be addressed, but the property owner just claims that access from that end of the field totally disrupts the farming operation and his ability to get into and out of the field and to farm it in the pattern that he wants to and to access it with trucks. to and to access it with trucks the way he wants to. So he's got a very specific farming protocol in place and feels very strongly about that.
So what kind of recourse can we expect if this goes through? I mean, is there any, or is it just eminent domain is bang, final?
I'll let the city attorney, I think, review the process.
Sure. From this point, what the authorization, or what the resolution before you will do is authorize me to file on the city's behalf a condemnation petition to reacquire the two easements over the two parcels. I have been contacted by an attorney representing the property owners. We've, in general terms, discussed how it would be beneficial to talk early and try and work out a resolution to this, as city staff has not been able to do with the property owner directly. The hope is we'd be able to do that at the attorney level. Obviously, if that were to happen, that would be the best for everyone involved and would it involve minimal additional expenses for the city above and beyond whatever the cost of acquisition is. If that is unsuccessful, we will move to condemnation, which means we will take title to the easements, and then through the condemnation process, court-appointed commissioners will have to hear evidence from both parties and a sign of value, actually what it is, is damages that the property owner sustained because we have retaken these easements. And there's various processes beyond that. If either side is unhappy with the commissioner's report, there's appeal procedures, and that's the process we'll go through. But, I mean, does that answer your question?
Somewhat. What I'm hearing is that you are going to deal with his attorney first before this? Is that what you just said earlier?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, okay.
I've been in contact with him. I've told him I'll be in contact again following passage or not of this resolution, and, you know, obviously, the hope is we can make progress and work something out.
So it's kind of one last try?
It is, absolutely one last try.
Okay. I'm uncomfortable with eminent domain, especially somebody that was born and raised in Wilmere, very successful businessman, he knows what he's doing. I'm uncomfortable with it, very uncomfortable.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
I want to correct my statements. I mentioned earlier, it was on page 27 of this report on farmland prices for the next 12 months. I'm sure this has a lot to do with commodity prices, but 77% reviewed and expect a price decrease of land values from zero to 5%. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Johnson.
Hi.
Dawkins.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Christiansen.
No.
Almond.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Six ayes, one nay. That motion carries, or resolution carries. New business, under new business, Councilwoman Almond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a few people ask me about, and commented with a few people and conversed with a few people in our Public Works Department after this snowstorm we had early, and we got dumped. A lot of snow in such a short time. And after looking at what I saw visually throughout the town, I think they did an outstanding job based on the conditions that were presented. I think they should be commended on that. One thing that I am a little concerned about is the cost of the city to plow the streets, and I'm talking with a couple of drivers, they both agreed that if the cars were removed and we declared a snow emergency, that this would ultimately save the taxpayers some money, and they would be spending less time in their, coming back two to three times to clean a street. And I'm just curious, this has been talked about, I think, in the past by the committee, and we haven't made a decision on it, but I think, I think we're at the point now where I think we should have a plan of action along with an accessible way for the public to understand which streets are to be cleared for no parking, east, west, nor south, and that should be available. I think we can put that up on our webpage, and I think it's something that we could do to save the bottom line of the city of Wilmere. Not trying to take the overtime away from the employees, but I think it's frustrating for them to handle all the additional trips they make back and forth. And I just would like to bring that up to the council to see if we can maybe discuss that with, on the Public Works Committee, Mr. Christiansen, if that's possible, and for staff to have some information on it presented in due time. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor Yanis.
Any further new business?
Mayor Yanis.
Councilwoman Nelson.
Have we ever looked at parking only on one side of the street versus no parking? I'm just wondering if we're going to do some research and bring it before Public Works that we would look at what other options other cities are doing.
They would look at it.
Just not one particular thing, but if there's parking on one side or the other.
Right. There's all kinds of ideas, yeah. I'm sure we can learn from other cities and what they've done. And I believe the mayor would have the right to call the snow emergency or the city administrator the way, however we set it up.
Is there any more new business to talk about? How about old business? Councilman Anderson.
I do. On a lighter note, this weekend, Saturday, is the Holidays Parade. There'll be activities beginning at 3:00 in the afternoon downtown, and the parade is to start about 6:30, so I would encourage everyone, maybe it's going to be warm, encourage everyone to get out there and support that and spend some time in downtown Wilmere.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Could I add to that, please, in the Holidays Parade?
Absolutely.
I did contact individuals from the Mills property, own the Nissan, the old Nissan dealership downtown, and I'm talking to a few of the people from the design center. They're expecting a larger turnout, and I think they've expanded on that through the years. Anyway, they, I have the individual's name, Charlene, I'd like to give it to you to discuss whether or not we could use that for a day event, parking only. I don't know what the cost to the city would be, but it'd sure be nice to have that right in the downtown area for the people, especially if we have cold weather. It's been pretty cumbersome sometimes when I've been down there trying to find a parking spot, and there's a little distance involved, but if we can make it, the event a little more palatable for people to come downtown, I think it would be a great use of the property if we can get an agreement with the Mills people, since they're part of our neighborhood or part of our family and our community, I hope they're receptive to the idea.
If you want to pass that along, we'll look into it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Announcement of council committee meeting dates. Councilman Anderson, finance.
Finance is going to be busy. We have a meeting tomorrow, 4:00 here. That's with the full council, and we'll be getting a number of reports. The utilities will be here, the hospital will be here, then we have community groups, and I'm hoping that we can resolve some issues on the budget so that at our regular finance meeting then on the 24th, we can put the final touches on the budget. Tomorrow, 4:00, the 24th, 4:45, City Hall.
Public Works, Councilman Christiansen.
No meeting next week.
Councilman Almond, labor.
No labor, one coming probably in a few more weeks. Nothing to date.
Community Development, Councilman Fagerly.
It's going to be on a different day. It's going to be Tuesday next week, 25th, 4:45.
At the...
City Hall.
City Hall. Entertaining the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.